The business and finance report, there was no finance meeting this week, this month, so curriculum reports, we'll start with the student report.
Okay, thank you. So, the month of November saw progress on the student mental health[13.54][13.54]initiative. This included the creation of poster board that was hung on student council's bulletin board in the second floor hallway of the high school. This month's poster covered information relevant to generalized anxiety disorder. Next month's poster will share information about obsessive compulsive disorder. The hope is that within the coming months, student council will be able to reach two local mental health experts to speak at the high school to ensure that this imperative information is reaching all those who it needs to be shared with. Also of note this month was the debut of Is He Dead by the Theater Department. Everyone looking to see the show thoroughly enjoyed it. The show starred seniors Addison Westinger, Gabe Saint Xavier, Dakota Borchett, Hazel Hodgson, and Hazel Hodgson. The play by Mark Twain focuses on famous French painter Jean Francois Mier, who was portrayed by Westinger. Youth motivational speaker Kara Filler visited the high school campus this month and spoke to students about, spoke to students at a safe driving assembly. She told her story of tragedy regarding reckless driving and how it has impacted her life to influence students to make good choices. Representatives from the Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles also attended the assembly and provided two drunk driving simulations that were informative in nature for the students. They also provided T-shirts and keychains to spread awareness of safe driving. This was a success among students and impacted them greatly. Later in the month, the high school hosted the creation of a kindness chain. This chain was comprised of thoughtful messages formulated by the students and linked together in a massive paper chain, which like you roll it and staple it and you do that for an entire length. The chain was later broken down and the messages were delivered during advisory to students at random and they were obviously anonymous. We hope that at least one of these wonderful messages made someone's day a bit brighter. So, that's my piece. And, okay, I'm glad.
So, one of the opportunities that's given to young women at the high school is the Olympia Snow Women's Leadership Institute. I'm actually a part of it. I was inducted last year and it's basically a leadership development program for promising young women. And each year, five girls are nominated at the start of their sophomore year. And this is our third year of doing this. We meet monthly at the school with volunteer mentors who work for some of Maine's top companies. And then on the 19th, the three classes, we traveled to Bangor for a statewide conference. And the members of the class of 2020 are Hannah Schroeder, Celia Dergan, Hazel Hodgson, Cordelia Roberts, and Dakota Borchett. The class of 2021, Alexa Natola, Erin King, me, Emma Brerly, and April Barrett. And then the class of 2022 are Jaden Bickford, Haley Capano, Hannah Decker, Olivia Rogers, and Cassidy Shea. And I think it's a really good opportunity for women at Sauk, young women at Saukapi. It provides us with a lot of networking opportunities with women in high positions in Maine and it gives us a chance to find our values, which is the focus in your first year. The second year is voice and the third year is vision. So, it teaches you how to find your values and how to use your voice to voice those values and your visions on how you plan on using those later in your life to be successful.
Okay, any questions to the student report? Thank you very much. Move on to the curriculum coordinator report.
Super. So, we always say that we never do a good enough job of sharing all the great things going on. So, each month I'll try to highlight a few things from the other schools' reports because our community doesn't get to see that. And sometimes our board members might not have a chance to read all of the material that we send you. So, from Princefield-Hughes report at the elementary school, they want to express their appreciation of the South Hyatt Fire Department who came and did fire safety with our students. It was very well received. The Porter Grange has been continuing their gift annually of dictionaries to all third graders. So, that was exciting. And we also thank the Sauk River Festival Association that brought in the Frog Town Mountain Puppeteers who did a presentation of the legend of Sleepy Hollow. And at the middle school, we had our second annual kids teaching kids technology day. It was incredible. Over 20 students led sessions all day long. Our students rotated throughout the school and our teachers as well. They did things such as coding, virtual reality, art and geometry, iCivics, all sessions that students designed. So, it was very well received. We also had the local chapter of the Freemasons, the Green Leaf Lodge donate 10 bicycles and did books for bikes. So, students who participated in our summer reading challenges where their names were in a drawing and they drew over 10, or 10 mountain bikes. And we also, Elizabeth Samborn, who's our gifted and talented teacher, led the yellow tulip project where they planted over 500 bulbs out front. So, we're excited to see what happens when those bulbs arrive. And a couple of quick notes from my report. We're excited to do our 2020 Teacher of the Year. So, we're taking nominations for those. The nomination form is online. And we're also doing our 2020 Education Support Person of the Year. The spelling bee is scheduled. It's going to be January 15th. It's always exciting to see our top spellers in grades five through eight. And I'm very excited that we're doing our second annual National Reeds Across America Day at the Riverside Cemetery in Cornish. It's Saturday, December 14th at 9:00 a.m. Under the leadership of Lieutenant Colonel Nadeg and Principal Lane, we have the high school band coming this year, the JROTC. And the middle school soul program is building a little display for the reeds. It's a really incredible ceremony. And lastly, I want to thank our high school students who sho, were showcasing some of their artworks. We have photos from Nathaniel Scott, Paige Cupple, Gary Houghton, and Charlie Fenderson. So, I'm appreciative that they were willing to share their, their photography. I think that's it.
Any questions for Sue? Okay, we'll move on to the curriculum committee report on November 13th meeting.
Our November 13th meeting was our triannual meeting on substance abuse prevention committee, which includes in addition to administrators and school educators, people from the community such as Dr. DeKay and various staff from the Health Center. Our main speaker to, at this meeting was Erica Lindstrom, who's been newly appointed as the Substance Abuse Prevention Coordinator at Healthy Oxford Hills. And she noticed, noted that she can help us by providing the Sidekicks program in which students learn about tobacco, the concerns around tobacco products, and how to have challenging conversations with others about their use of tobacco. She can also help with policies around tobacco, policies around tobacco and illegal substances. And she can help develop more of a restorative practice approach with violations of substance abuse policies. Erica is also continuing the stall talk flyers that are posted in the bathrooms in our schools. She is exploring the use of social media, including Snapchat, to send out prevention messaging. Prime for Life was another topic of discussion. It has three different programs that educate students in a nonjudgmental way. It provides students with information and guides them to answers regarding making safe choices. Erica Lindstrom and Bobby Joe Rand were both recently trained in the Prime for Life curriculum. They will have the ability to offer any of the three Prime for Life programs, ranging in length from four to 20 hours. Restorative practices for substance abuse. Restorative practice means substituting more supportive measures for punitive ones. Instead of an automatic suspension for marijuana, there is more education to help students be accountable for their actions and develop a plan to help them repair the harm. Lincoln Academy and South Portland High School are both using a restorative practice philosophy. Challenges and some potential solutions. A challenge is how to deal with students who come to school smelling like marijuana. Another, training educators to look for other signs of impairment. And potentially, we could check with other states that legalized marijuana before Maine to learn how they are handling some of these issues. And also, we could share information with students and families about the dangers. We reviewed our action plan, made note of our successes, and added new items. Our next meeting of the Substance Abuse Prevention Committee will be on Wednesday, March 11th, 2020, at 3:00 p.m. And we invite any of you who would like to come.
Okay. Any questions for Jolene? So, Adult Ed had no meeting, Lake Region Advisory Committee. Did anybody attend that?
Yes.
You're both here.
Yes. And basically, oh, it isn't. It's not really a review. Well, unless, it's more like a restaurant review than it is.
Okay. Give me your review.
Because what they did is, it's the culinary department provided the meal. And so, basically, you just went up and you were fed. And it was unbelievably good. Everything from tuna to tar to shrimp to, it was just an incredible meal. And the kids, it's, it's so much fun to watch them because they are being taught how to interact with the customer. And, and they were, they were very good. Exceptional presentation of food and an excellent showing of the skills that they've learned.
That's the meeting I keep hearing about and never, never find out about it in time.
Well, we ate, we ate your shit.
There were several kids there decorating the cakes for dessert. And they were putting roses on them and so forth, making roses by hand. Incredible.
Yeah. Any questions for Brad or Nancy? Sounds like a really tumultuous meeting. Yeah. Facilities reports, Construction, Transportation, and Safety Committee.
Do just one piece, Sue, if you don't mind. And you can do the whole thing. So, the only thing I wanted to mention was, because I've mentioned it to this board before, a couple things being designed by Ward Hill Architecture. One is a vestibule at our elementary school. And just Sue wouldn't know this piece yet. I've been working with Mr. Hughes, trying to make a plan. If we did in fact build a vestibule and put money into safety and security, how in fact would we use it? So, just the update is, which you don't know yet, he's going to work with his staff to talk about if we had this space, how would parents check in? How would that work? So, I should have an update for the January board meeting with Mr. Hughes. I will probably invite him as well as Ward Hill to look at the picture and talk about a plan. The second thing is outdoor bathrooms at our high school. We've gone for, if you recall, a few years back, a big locker room facility, just male and female bathrooms, a much smaller structure. Ward Hill has really pared it down. And as Sue wrote in her report, it would require a public vote. It's a new structure on our ground. So, it would probably be entailed in the April presentation to our public and then voted on a referendum. Not sure exactly the particulars. Drummond will craft that vote for us if this board supports bathrooms outside. So, you'll get to see it in January. That's the only piece I wanted to discuss. We've got a couple, a couple new pieces. The rest is all yours.
Okay. We have ordered plaques that thank Olivia Marion for putting up the Gaga Ball Court outside the element, the middle school. The elementary school playground, school bus, and fire truck were donated by the PTC. And plaques acknowledging that will be put on them. Carl's already talked about the Ward Hill Architect things. And Jeff Fleming is going to be at our next meeting. The gifted and talented tulips have been planted in front of the middle school. And we thank Diane Day for providing the bulbs for that project. Benches at the elementary school are being worked on. They're beginning to look worn. The school weathered the power outages in the month of October and the wind storms very well. Snow plowing contracts are being rebid. Each school's a separate contract. Do you have the results on that?
We do. Les Fox, who also works for us as our electrician, is the new snowplow contractor for our middle school.
For the middle school?
Yes.
What about the other two?
Shea.
Okay. Many of the trees that were removed near the former Alt Ed building had heart rot. And because of this, the committee agreed that the big leaning pine tree that is near the JROTC building should come down. We'll wait till the end of the year to do this, put it out to bid, and include stump grinding in that bid. Before we address new asphalt for the elementary school parking lot, we're going to have to install a catch basin by the ice skating rink. Roof evaluations are being done. The elementary school roof is 32 years old. The high school roof is 20 years old. And there's a portion of the roof that needs to be addressed right now. The, the middle school roof, because it's much newer, requires maintenance only. There was no meeting in December, and the next meeting will be January 8th at 10:30 a.m.
On the roofs, so, what are you talking about? Are you talking, are you talking about the elementary school and the high school? Are you talking about on the elementary school?
Total redo? What are you? Eventually, yeah.
For the upcoming year?
No, not for the upcoming year. We're going to put it into the 10-year plan. We haven't got, those two roofs aren't in the 10-year plan at this point in time. We need to put them in.
And the high school roof needs to be done?
There's a, there's a section of the roof that needs to be done right now.
Very small portion, Nancy. So, we do a yearly plan. Johnny's had the crew up. And then I think Sue Melanson used my funny word of recouping, but they, which is what I say. But they re-put the rubber or whatever. I don't know how they do it.
Remembre.
Remembre. Thank you. I'm glad we have someone here that knows something. But they do that yearly. So, I think we're getting at the point, they're getting older and we brought it. So, not to say, maybe it is next year. I don't know. But our companies are starting to take a look. We're getting to the point of 30 years that we ought to take a look at where we're at and get them in the plan somewhere, I probably.
Any other questions for Sue? Okay, we'll move along to the superintendent report.
Superintendent report. Let me start with the easier thing, and then I'll go to graduation date. So, resignation from Jamie Stacy as JV softball coach. He became the varsity baseball coach. So, had to resign one to do the other. And Megan Smith will be a middle school boys' basketball assistant coach. So, the other thing is setting graduation date. I'll tell you the process. And I have Kyle Sprague here to let you know some things too, if need be. But, so how that process went for graduation date, I spoke to the senior team of teachers with Britt, provided some options. I think it was pretty universal that folks liked the evening graduation. Hearing some of the feedback from the board and others, we are going to scooch it up to 6 o'clock and avoid some of the mosquitoes that came at the end of the 7 o'clock. I heard the board loud and clear. And yes, I was on the stage getting eaten myself come 8:30 or so. So, an hour sooner. But I think everybody liked the evening graduation. And I think the team of teachers was pretty excited about putting things in place to have the kids have a Friday evening graduation. So, they made a plan, a proposed plan that they presented to the kids. They told me that the kids cheered enthusiastically about the plan. I asked our board representative and senior, Kyle Sprague, not to put him on the spot. I think it was pretty well received by the kids. That's a fair statement?
That's definitely a fair statement.
So, there you go. So, I think you have the senior team of teachers who put something in place. I think you have the kids supportive of it. So, my recommendation based on the senior teachers who are responsible for the children, Mr. Wolf, and the kids would be Friday evening, June 5th, I hope I have that right as I'm saying it on TV, at 6:00 p.m. And yes, they will have a plan that will allow for them to meet the state required number of days doing so.
June 5th?
June 5th at 6:00 p.m. Friday, June 5th at 6:00 p.m. is the proposal. That's what I'm recommending. That's all I have. Sue?
I think all of us received a letter from Kim Hubbard today about the conflict with the Special Olympics. And the fact that she had seen a letter that had already gone out stating that graduation was going to be on that day at that time.
Sure.
Before we approve it, how can her letter go on?
It was a proposed graduation schedule that went out to show how they'd meet the days. I spoke to Ms. Hubbard this morning. There is Special Olympics on the weekend. Last year was on Saturday night, which really wasn't as good because the bulk of events happen on Saturday. This year, Friday night, slightly better than, than Saturday. I spoke to her this morning. I think she's in a good place with it. I think she thought it was for sure. But it definitely has to come before the board. But I think it's the kind of thing that no matter what night you set, so, do it the next weekend. Well, then I think you have some unhappy kids who have to go to school a whole week, 80 kids and their families. If you set it on a Tuesday night, then my relatives can't come on a Tuesday night. So, I think it's the kind of thing that no matter what night we pick, there might be some conflict. But I did speak with Ms. Hubbard today.
I, I would think that perhaps she should speak with the Special Olympics people that set that date because we're not the only ones that have graduation that weekend.
No, I would assume.
And I'm sure it's going to affect a lot of people across the state.
And just so this board knows, what we will do as a district immediately, so I talked to her this morning, I believe it in fact impacts any children who have to make a choice. The few grownups that have to make a choice, they can take a district van right after graduation. If there's enough people that need a ride, Staff Smith is informing, we'll send a bus to Orenno right after graduation to make sure kids or grownups don't miss out on that event.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, of course. So, oh, one more thing I should say. I think in, last thing I'll say. In this scenario with a Friday evening, I think some of the Special Olympians, or the chaperones in this case, might miss opening ceremonies. But I think she told me today, when we do the Sunday graduation, they miss closing ceremonies. So, I think you're right. It's just hard with a whole weekend from 9:00 a.m. on a Friday till whatever time on a Sunday, unless we completely move the weekend or did a midweek thing. It would be a challenge. So, she and I thought had a great talk today. And I think we're in an okay place with it.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Carl on graduation? Well, we'll have a consideration to approve Friday, June 5th, 2020, at 6:00 a.m. for your graduation.
So moved.
By Judy, seconded by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Okay.
There you go, Kyle Sprague. You're the first to know.
Does that conclude the superintendent?
That's all I have. Yes, sir.
Okay. Policy committee, policy report. We had no meeting. However, we do have one policy in the pipeline under action items. So, we'll have consideration to approve the following policy as a second read and adoption, JICC conduct on school buses. Do I have a motion for that?
No move.
Moved by Jolene, seconded by Jackie. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Other action items? That's you.
Oh, that is me. Well, you start us off, and then I'll fill in the details. Consider and?
Consideration to approve special education teacher at Saukapi Valley Middle School.
So moved.
Moved by Judy, seconded by Nancy. Any discussion?
Well, I have a sheet here that I know we like. Hang on one second. Send some this way. As you know, every time we do this, we've gone through the process, the recommendation. We have been looking for a middle school special education behavior teacher for quite some time. I'd say, since last spring.
Yep.
We had it filled, and we had to transfer because of a different move. We've been looking for a while. So, Bonnie Houghton, it's right in front of you, graduated cum laude from Granite State College with a bachelor's degree in behavioral science. She also holds a master's degree in education from the University of Southern Maine, teaching and learning. She has gone through our hiring process, and she is my recommendation to be our middle school special education behavior teacher.
Can you just, yes, experience. Is she new at this or what?
Uh, no, she's not. She's been a special education teacher before.
Okay. Where will she perform on the scale?
Uh, jeepers.
Well, mid-high.
Eight, uh, yeah, eight to 10-ish.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Maggie?
Does this start right now, Carl?
Uh, probably after the holiday break, Maggie. I'm in communication.
Is this where, to Ed text?
Yes, correct. And I'm in communication with her current superintendent. And we talked today. So, I don't want to swear this, but just probably after holiday break because I think they're going to be in a tough spot. And just to further answer Nancy, yeah, eight to 10, I was close. It's somewhere in there.
Is she coming from privately?
Yes.
Carl?
I just wanted to, is this Bonnie Houghton who used to teach at the high school?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to vouch for her. She, I think all of her students at the high school loved her as a teacher. And that's all I can say about her. She's a very good teacher, so.
Any other questions for Carl? All in favor of that appointment? Opposed? Motion carries? Okay. Other items to discuss?
The last meeting, we talked about, if I remember correctly, 20 or 21 students wanted to have a conversation about lacrosse. In that conversation, we also ended up talking about the possibility of volleyball. And so, where are you in that whole process?
Nowhere. But here's where I am.
That's good.
Britt might be able to fill in some. So, I think indoor track will happen for a few children. I mentioned that.
Yeah, right.
I think it's down in a few, that's this winter. Lacrosse, we haven't gone anywhere further unless Britt has further information from Ms. Sawyer. I still think she's talking to the children, looking, because I told her about cost, right? We don't have that. And looking for other schools that may donate equipment. So, then it becomes more cost-effective for us to play starting out. So, I don't have any further information. I think there are still in those kids. And I think they are still working on trying to come with more details to this board. Volleyball, someone mentioned, I don't have knowledge of volleyball, but someone said it's an up and coming fall sport. The problem with us, I think, and I think the kids would vouch, and Britt, we have fewer and fewer students in our high school, right? So, you're down to 290 kids. So, you start saying we're going to have soccer, and football, and cross country, and volleyball. We're already, and field hockey. We're struggling, we're stretching our 290 kids pretty thin. And I'm not anti-volleyball. I think anything that they can be in positive is great. But I haven't heard a lot about that one. I think lacrosse would be the bigger one that would come for you. Unless somebody else knows something different, feel free. But that's all I know.
Judy?
Just to follow up on the volleyball, have any of you had been in the gym for the intramural volleyball? That place is packed. The kids really, really like it.
They do love it. In between the winter and spring season, when you get lots of turnout.
What I was going to mention was, I was so impressed with the reports from the elementary school, middle school, and high school of what's going on this last couple of months with what they're doing for their students, the extracurricular, and the reeds across America. I mean, every school had some kind of a community service type program going on. And I'm proud to be on the board of directors for this district.
Okay, Maggie?
Do we still do volleyball, Carl?
Intramural? Yes. That's still our March thing. I don't think we're planning on changing this year, Mr. Wolf.
No.
Yes, we do.
Couple of meetings ago, we started getting into a discussion about students being abusive to teachers and staff, and how do we handle it? And there were a couple of suggestions. Has it, has that gone anywhere?
Sure. So, I think where maybe that came from is there's a new rule out about dangerous behavior directed at grownups. Some of you on listservs, whatever, may see that. I have a meeting with both union presidents tomorrow morning to discuss how we're going to handle that as a district. I will update the board subsequent to the meeting. Great memory, Wes.
I'm just mentioning, I don't want to get swept under the rug.
Nope. We're having a meeting tomorrow, Wes. I appreciate it.
Brad?
On that note, our Ed techs, it's, I think, pretty much common knowledge. The biggest benefit we give them is the health benefits and so forth. The person's pay. I know that some of them work in other jobs. If one of these Ed techs should get hurt on the job by abusive behavior and can't work their other job, do we have any liability or responsibility?
I don't know the answer. I know we have, we have responsibility for, for us, right? Workers' compensation and those kinds of things if they were hurt and couldn't perform their job. And I don't know if we're responsible for their outside jobs. I don't know the answer. We haven't had that situation. And certainly check into it. If someone else knows who's an HR person, let me know. But I don't know that.
I'm just thinking that if that should happen, because I know, you know, like teachers have other jobs as well. Let's say somebody gets kicked in the knees in camp waitress or whatever, and losing money.
It's a good question. I don't know the answer.
You going to take it as homework?
I'll take it as homework. I know the answer for us. I know what we do for them. But I don't know about their other work.
Okay, Judy?
Reading more and more about the school districts taking up the responsibility for educating birth through K. Where are we with that? Or where is your superintendent?
My friend Sue Day.
Do you mean CDS, the change from CDS to?
Oh, that one, yeah. I can jump on that. I thought you meant birth to K. Feel free. But, so, CDS, I haven't heard a lot about it. At the superintendent's group, we do discuss it. It keeps hanging out there. Feel free to jump in, Sue. But no one's making the move on it, right? So, they run in the red. When school districts take it over, how are we going to run the black? Because we think we're going to identify more kids. Where are you going to put those kids? How are you going to get them to school or a place? Sue think, well, I won't speak for Sue, if dangerous. But they might go to local daycares. I don't think people have that details ironed out on what that's going to look like. I think from my chair in my superintendent's group, it keeps hanging here, but there's been no timeline or dates. But please feel free, Suzanne, if you have any.
No, the last thing that I read about is that the legislative committee felt that the proposal about the cost was very inadequate. It didn't really.
I think it's in discussion.
So, I think it is still being discussed.
Thank you.
You all can pay for us.
They've just, I think it was in the Bangor newspaper, they've allotted something like $15,000 to $25,000 for a special committee to review all the data. data.
On CDS?
Yeah. Which means they're getting pushed back from the districts and everybody.
And everybody wants it to run outside of EPS. So this board, like bore to tears every year with EPS and the two seventy-nine. A big thing, I think, for every superintendent. That's fine if we're, but the funding for it runs here and make us whole, you can't put it in the formula. So I think that's still in discussion too.
But they found fifty to twenty-five thousand to fund that.
To do the study?
Yeah.
There you go.
Do you have anything else, Brad?
Yes. At the end of the last meeting, uh, we put off discussing the fall conference until this meeting. I think that was one of the last things we brought up. And my purpose in mentioning this is not, so I can talk about what happened at the meeting, but I, I just thought that our board representation, um, at that, those two days worth of meetings was less than ideal. And, you know, how are we going to, if, if we don't have a better representation there, seeing what's going on somewhere else and the opportunities that we might have for our kids? You know, if it's only a few of us that go, um, I don't know how we can generate a lot